Welcome, everybody. Today is the ninth day of October and this is our full council meeting. If you would help me get it started as we usually do with the pledge of allegiance, please stand as ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this day is a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sir, could you do a little talk, please?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chaney, is absent. Ms. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Marks?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Van Harn?
Here.
Before we get started, I wanted to say that I feel it's appropriate that when someone contributes so much of their life to a community that we take time to just stop what we're doing and consider that in detail, which is what we're going to do right now concerning the passing of Gulf Manor resident Jim Whitis. I'm going to turn things over to Councilman Marks to say a few words.
Yeah, I just requested a few minutes. I don't know how many of you know Jim Whitis, knew Jim Whitis. Lifelong resident Gulf Manor. I say lifelong. His family moved here when he was two years old and they bought a house at the dead end of Yosemite Drive. And when Jim met Donna and they got married, he moved all the way over to Hamilton Avenue and he's been there ever since. So, yeah, he just, he loved everything about Gulf Manor. As a matter of fact, their daughter Stephanie lives across the street on Hamilton. So, they can't even get out of Gulf Manor no matter what they try. Jim was a very interesting guy. He attended Woodward High School. He was on their cross-country team. He swam for the Sensei Marlins. I think he swam for the Torpedoes. Unfortunately, I can't find anybody in that age group that I know that was there then. He also played semi-pro football. Jim was a longtime Bengals ticket holder. I think he and I have both had tickets since like eighty-three. And his famous comment was, "Oh, I'm a football fan stuck in Cincinnati." That's how I viewed it, you know? And I said, "Well, you don't even know you were in Cleveland, so don't say anything." One of Jim's big things, he was a forty-year member of the fire department. That is just astounding. He joined that about the time I joined it, a bunch of others of us that were young back then. There was a whole new influx of people and Jim just stayed on for forty years and he loved it absolutely. And at his visitation, it looked like the Gulf Manor reunion. It was really wonderful. He had a lot of lifelong friendship and he was only seventy-one, which... Anyway, I'm here to talk about two people. Other than that, I want to thank Chief Young of Saint Bernard and Chief Meter of DPS for supplying the aerial ladders. That is very, very interesting. If you've ever been to a fire department funeral, they set up the aerials across the entrance to the cemetery. So, thank you for that. Okay? So, I'm glad I made it through that somehow. Anyway, so Danny Meter, this is very interesting. I don't know how many of you know, Danny was married to Kelly Longcheway, who was a Pleasant Ridge resident and graduated from Tivity School. Anyway, back on the, it was over homecoming weekend, right? They named the soccer field, the Kelly Longcheway Memorial Soccer Field at Purcell Marion. Great honor.
Yes.
Yeah, Kelly passed away, I think, in twenty nineteen?
Yes, the four years.
Four years, yeah. Twelve-year battle with cancer. And it's very interesting that weekend. They also named the football field Bearberry Terry. Bearberry Terry was a classmate of Kelly Longcheway, who also grew up in Pleasant Ridge, who also went to Tivity. So, do good things. I saw your pictures. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It was a neat honor for you. Yep. Thank you.
Is there a motion to excuse me?
Motion to excuse.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Without objection, I'll take your question. And for the agenda, there are a couple items to add under the legislation. One has to do with, you know, we discussed that we're going to talk about our strategic plan this evening if we decide to pass it. This legislation then puts that into the resolution. That would be twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. Also, I've been handed one that has to do with, here it is, has to do with the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Hamilton County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. That's Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three Twenty-seven that our legal counsel has asked, that we have added to the agenda. So, is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended and/or is there any other additions or contractions that someone would like to propose? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Without objection, I'll take your question. Thank you. And we have one registered speaker this evening, Ms. Haven Van Harn. Would you like to come forward, please, and state your address and your name?
I'm sure I will.
Please come right up here.
Yeah.
Everybody can see it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Haven Van Harn. About four years ago, I had my first cookie sale. Thank you to Mayor Densmore for making September twenty-ninth Haven Van Harn Day. That helps keep this cookie sale tradition going. Today, I present three hundred and seventeen dollars to Mayor Densmore. This money is going to the future path of Gulf Manor Park. I believe that this path will bring more people to our park and make it more enjoyable. This may only be a fraction of what we need for the path, but it is the start of a change for this endeavor. Thank you all for your time and support.
Excellent.
Good cookies, though.
Put your hand on the chest, too. If you give it to him.
Very authentic.
Yeah. I keep my eye on Stefan.
Yeah. One, two, three.
Yeah, mom.
Thank you.
Where's the boss?
For council. Thanks again on behalf of the full council and the community that will benefit from your work, Ms. Haven. Thank you. All right, we have minutes to be approved from council meeting on nine eleven. Everyone had an opportunity to sufficiently look at those. And if so, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I was supposed to sign down here. Sorry, technical difficulties on what I'm supposed to sign. All right, sorry for the delay. Chief Meter, do you have a fire district report for us?
Not a wide report this evening. We've, as you see from the run totals, we provided to the service back in the beginning of October. We are, it's about four thousand total calls between all of our service areas. I think we're about where we expected to be, similar to where we were last year with Gulf Manor, once we factor in those extra two months we had this year compared to last year. We are about to commence on live burn training at the end of October. It's part of the year requirements that we do. Continuing with testing equipment this time of year, pump testing the fire trucks, completing our hose testing, trying to make sure all our equipment is up, ready to go. So, that, really, it's been a lot of that going on, a lot of PR events this month as well, with fire prevention, fire safety, attends and works from a week to a month. So, we've been visiting schools that have asked us to come out. We've been giving tours. We were down at Home Depot last weekend. We'll be down at Lowe's this coming Saturday for a few hours just to get out and talk to the public. So, other than that, we have a board meeting that'll be on the seventeenth of October, so that should be, that'll be next Tuesday. That starts at four thirty. We have one, I guess, made a proposal in front of the board that we're going to ask them to adopt a resolution to get our next medic unit on order. The one that we ordered back in April of twenty twenty-two is still not being built. I don't have a chassis for it yet. So, we want to get the next one on order before we run into this issue. I'm actually jumping the gun a little bit on my replacement schedule, but we got to get it on order. They're quoting us two years from the time the contract is signed, so we won't see it till late twenty twenty-five at the earliest. So, in the meantime, we'll maintain what we have. We've had to borrow a few from Gulf Manor, I'm sorry, from Reading and from Montgomery over the course of the last few months due to supply chain issues on needing parts for hours. So, if you see a Reading or Montgomery, it's actually probably our personnel, but again, residents really, they don't look to the side, they just want to make sure that somebody's there to help. So, if you happen to hear that, it's just because we're running out of more equipment for now. Other than that, does the council or the public have any questions for me?
Yep.
I have one question. I reviewed the report and I noticed there was three or four reports of downed wires and arcing.
Mm-hmm.
What was that about? Because it was on two different streets and I was like, what the world's happening?
So, we tend it, so especially come summertime during the storm season, winter time when we start to get ice issues, you'll get branches come down and take down the wires. It's always dispatches, wires down slash arcing on fire. And a lot of times we come to find out those are all telephoned on, they might be cable lines now, so it's not really a danger to the public. We make notifications to the dispatch center to have them come out and fix their issue. But if it is something like a live wire down, we'll either try to sit on it or tape it off, depending on if we have to do multiple calls for the same reason. So, a lot of those end up being usually cable work or telephoned on.
It just struck me, I haven't really, don't remember seeing that in all of that. I saw that three or four.
Yeah, and it's one of these things that you just, you see pop up and you probably won't have one for another two months and then first snowfall will be out chasing again. So, okay. Thank you.
On a related note, I often see on my Google News feed, lines down in Gulf Manor and it's, I think it's WLWT. I'll click on it and that's all it will say on the story is lines down in Gulf Manor. And, you know, as far as getting, we talked a little bit earlier about the importance of a social media presence that can put stuff out there. I get concerned about people seeing that and not know, not having any information about what's going on with that. So, I appreciate you.
Yeah, I can hear all of your conversations about social media. That's, social media is something we kind of fight with as well. We don't have anybody dedicated other than the chief or my assistant chief and myself to doing that. It's just, it's hard to keep up with everything else we're trying to accomplish. So, if you guys have some good ideas on how to do it, we'll piggyback off of you guys.
Appreciate it.
We're always looking for ways to get our message out. And I know it's been successful. I've seen some of your residents like to comment and share them, so I know it's happening. So, yeah, if there's a way to get more of it out, we're happy to figure out a way to deal with you guys.
All right. Any other questions for Chief Meter?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, sir.
All right, I will be here Halloween night.
All right.
And we'll also be down for the safety, health safety event on the twenty...
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Yep.
That'll be the duty crew coming down that day because all two people will be doing the live burns out of Scarlet Oaks. But I've already talked to that crew, they're going to be assigned to run from down here for the event, so they may have to come and go a little bit, but we'll have representation. So, we're trying to resurrect our open house and chili cook-off and trunk or treat event in that, since it's a late Bengals game, it's four thirty to six thirty, so. It's on our calendar, so some of us will be here. It depends on who we can drag away from the live burns and how beat the eyes are, but the assigned crew will be down here and make runs as necessary.
Perfect. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we're bringing chili. Sorry? Bringing chili.
Yeah, we had this discussed with Chili's.
We do make a lot of chili this time of year at the firehouse. Yeah. In the summer time, it's too hot, but this time.
We might need a DPS versus GMPD chili.
There we go. I'd be up for that.
Thank you.
Why don't you have trophies? I need to share.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Chief Meter.
All right, good to go. Again, if you have any questions or concerns, please call Ray Mowry.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, there's a lot going on and my report will be consequently very lengthy. On behalf of the village and all the members of council, I want to say that we stand in solidarity with all those suffering under the recent horrific violence in Israel, especially the civilians who take the brunt of all this and yet didn't have anything to do with it in the first place. The dehumanization that occurs in wars as a matter of survival is the most dangerous enemy to civilization. We've seen this time and time again and terrorism just doubles down on it. We also stand in solidarity with all those who have loved ones over there and are worried about their safety today. There's an event tomorrow evening and they later this afternoon changed the address of it, so I'll get that information out there. A community solidarity gathering that's going to be held at the Adath Israel Congregation? Did I pronounce that correctly? All right.
Addeth.
Addeth. Addeth Israel Congregation. That is, you're probably familiar with it when you travel down Ridge in the corner of Galbraith. That's at thirty-two oh one East Galbraith Road. Let's see, the doors open at six P.M., the program's at seven P.M. You can register online. If you don't register, you'll need to show your I.D. at the door if you want to participate as part of that. Yes?
On that note, I did get a text back from Zach and he said he could not attend a meeting because he was helping organizing that event tonight, so I was, I was going to announce the meeting and I forgot, that's why. He's in another...
Yeah, it touches, touches everybody, particularly closely to a lot of members of our community. There is, we've had some discussion about CPR courses to offer to residents for the purpose of getting a, you know, a babysitter certification for, for people in our community. There's a free pediatric CPR class that's being offered Saturday, October fourteenth, so this coming Saturday from nine A.M. to two P.M. It's free. It's at the Hersch Recreation Center. That's a six-year recreation center. The class is great for children twelve and older who are going to be babysitting younger kids as well as adults who want to learn how to do CPR on child or infants. The course is free, however, they are asking that you register in advance so they have a sense of who all is coming and space is limited for it. You can find the, that registration if you're just searching for this topic online. In addition to CPR, they're also covering how to use AEDs with, with children and infants as well as choking protocols. So, a good broad range of things going on. Also, I had not talked to you, Chief, about this. I didn't know if you were going to be presenting on this or not, but I got this invitation and thought I would share it with everybody. It's for the Haber Camp Hundredth from the Haber Camp Foundation, which is supporting the, the legacy of a K-9, well, Haber Camp, who was killed in the line of duty. He was our K-9 person. I'm probably not doing this justice. Anyway, there, there is a, yes, I know. The, so there's an annual five K. that's done to raise money for area police departments that have K-9 units. And this is the hundredth, if I understand this correctly, the hundredth one they've done or no?
They're celebrating the one hundredth K-9 placement.
Okay.
That's what it is.
I will let you speak on this during your report or I will ask you to speak on it, if that would be, all right, because you'll, you'll cover it much better than I'm doing justice for. But anyway, here's the invitation if you'd like to look at it. I'm happy to pass that round. The, let's see, the Recreation Commission. Back in twenty twenty, I set out a roadmap to reestablish a functioning Recreation Commission. Recreation Commission is charged with planning, organizing, and supervising village recreation programs for children and adults. For years, it had not been functioning to code and I believe that was, that the primary reason it disintegrated, that that was the primary reason that disintegrated, having not enough involvement from the community or volunteers. The roadmap I designed for its reestablishment called upon the creation of a community engagement committee, which had three objectives. One was spread awareness about the twenty twenty census that was going on at the time to try to get a big turnout. The second was to try to come up with some ideas for what the village was going to do on its seventy-fifth anniversary. And the third was to recruit enough new faces to populate the Recreation Commission according to code, which is nine members from the community and one non-voting liaison from the council. COVID did not stop us from doing any of these things and I want to thank our current Chair of Community Engagement, Bryant Bussie, for always done to make this a reality. I have seven nominations secured and three more for a total complement of ten to be announced at our next council meeting. If any council members have additional folks in mind they would like to add to the nominations list, please let me know along with their contact information and I'll add them to the list of names that we'll be presenting at the next council meeting. The next community engagement meeting will be Tuesday next week, nine thirty. That's October seventeenth, where we'll go over the various ordinances, charter, constitution, and bylaws currently in effect for the Recreation Commission. This will be a good opportunity for any potential nominees to learn more about what the commission does if they're interested. Okay? And... All right. Each month, and I've been doing this for the past couple of years, I've tried to include in my mayor's report a reflection on the diversity of our village and the greater community and the greater strength we have when we educate ourselves to the experiences beyond our end. This includes the history of our nation's shortcomings and tragedies in our continuing journey to better manifest the ideals laid out in our founding documents. I believe we're indeed stronger when we come together in celebration of that diversity, which is why I've tried to do this each month. And today, what I'm going to be talking about is Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, the federal holiday of Columbus Day was first officially proclaimed by President Benjamin Harrison in eighteen ninety-two to mark the four-hundredth anniversary of Columbus landing in the Bahamas. Franklin Roosevelt established the first federal observance of Columbus Day in nineteen thirty-seven. Since nineteen seventy-one, the holiday has been celebrated on the second Monday of October. At its best, the holiday in the U.S. celebrates the Western discovery of America and Italian-American pride. Celebration occurs throughout North and South America, a celebration not of the discovery of the U.S., but the new world, and so it goes by different names. Some call it Discovery of America Day, that's in Honduras. In Argentina, since nineteen seventeen, they've called it the Day of Respect for Cultural Diversity. It's called the Day of Races in Mexico and Uruguay and the Race Day in Chile. In these places, it's a celebration of diversity among Native Americans and Europeans. Fourteen states in the U.S., Alabama, Alaska, Hawaii, Idaho, Maine, Michigan, Minnesota, New Mexico, North Carolina, Oklahoma, Oregon, South Dakota, Vermont, and Wisconsin, plus the District of Columbia, and more than a hundred and thirty cities observe Indigenous Peoples' Day today instead of or in addition to Columbus Day. Indigenous Peoples' Day is said to honor the past, present, and futures of Native people throughout the U.S. It's said to recognize the legacy and impact of colonialism on Native communities and to celebrate the cultures, contributions, and resilience of the contemporary Native peoples. There seems to be sometimes controversy in the U.S. these days over what parts of our history get emphasized and who gets to tell the story of our collective past. One of the blessings of diversity, as I was alluded to earlier, is the multiple perspectives it adds and more complete vision we collectively gain from it and the stronger we become individually and collectively with more knowledge of that bigger picture that so often comes from being able to see more than one side of things with that in mind. I hope my report on the federal holiday of Columbus Day is helpful. I have a proclamation recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and it is quite lengthy. Typically, what we like to do is have a little one-pager that we frame and get to hang up on the wall. This is two pages, so it's probably not going to be able to fit that, that ideal as closely, but I think it's important to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day today. And I've written it in a way that helps us perhaps see the day in a, in a way that we haven't seen it before. So, proclamation recognizing Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas this land, which would become known today as the Village of Gulf Manor, was first a land where Native Americans fished, hunted, and gathered natural foodstuffs, having communities, each with separate political and cultural identities. And whereas Native Americans domesticated animals, biologically engineered crops, discovered natural medicines are attributed with the invention or perfection of many agricultural and architectural and technological advances, including that of corn and rubber, raised bed agriculture, anesthetics, and topical pain relievers, oral contraceptives, and mouthwash, syringes, baby bottles, kayaks, snow goggles, cable suspension bridges, and hammocks. Native American innovations in areas such as mathematics and government greatly influenced other cultures in Europe and Latin America, and many have been made aware of Native people's secret contributions as code talkers during World War Two. Whereas in seventeen sixty-three, the Treaty of Paris, England prohibited the settlement of some American lands to protect the rights of these Native Americans, lands which included the present-day Village of Gulf Manor. And whereas, following the revolution in seventeen eighty-seven, the newly-formed U.S. government believed it could sell and indeed sold these lands to a man named John Sims, who in turn would subdivide and sell to developers such as a man named Mr. Ludlow, whom with two other partners created a town here named Los Anasville. Whereas this town only had three cabins, the population grew to a total of seven hundred people, such that the governor of these Northwest Territories created the County of Hamilton and not liking the name Los Anasville, changed the name of the town to Cincinnati. And whereas, the increasing population of settlers who were staking claims to land already occupied led to increasing tensions with Native Americans and military base named Fort Washington was built in our area. And whereas, three years later, in the Battle of Fallen Timbers, a large coalition of Native American warriors were defeated by the U.S. military and made to sign the Treaty of Greenville, in which Native Americans were moved from our local area to regions further to the Northwest. And whereas, within forty years of this increased U.S. military involvement, the U.S. government began forcibly relocating Native Americans, including those who still remained in our local region, across the Mississippi River under legislation called the Indian Removal Act of eighteen thirty, which has now been referred to as the Trail of Tears, where deliberate attempts to exterminate through promotion of disease and starvation are well documented in federal records. Whereas during the American Indian Wars, which followed, the American Army carried out a number of massacres and forced relocations of Indigenous peoples that are internationally recognized as genocide, including the Sand Creek Massacre of eighteen sixty-four, in which U.S. troops, under disgusting leadership, took scalps and other body parts as trophies, including human fetuses and male and female genitalia. Two-thirds of these Native Americans that were killed on this state were women, children, and infants. And whereas, when our land acquisition reached the California coast, the ensuing policies of military and civilian government saw a large number of well-documented state subsidized massacres of Native Americans by colonists, including cities and towns offering bounties for scalps, such as five dollars for each head, and local governments being reimbursed for their payouts by the federal government, causing several entire ethnic groups to be wiped out and the overall Native American population to decrease due to killings, starvation, epidemic illness, from an estimated three hundred thousand to twenty thousand. Those not killed were often sold as slaves and this, slaves in this whole collective chapter became known as the California genocide. Whereas our country at its founding stated an ideal of equality and opportunity for all people. They promised that despite the extraordinary progress we have made through the years, we have never fully lived up to. And whereas, we investigate and talk about our inhumanity so that we can make more clear what humanity looks like and what, and what continuous actions it requires to make the country we love more closely approximate the ideals upon which it was founded. And whereas, the idea was first proposed by Indigenous peoples at the United Nations in nineteen seventy-seven and a little over one hundred years, or excuse me, a little over ten... for scalps, such as $5 for each head, and local governments being reimbursed for their payouts by the federal government, causing several entire ethnic groups to be wiped out and the overall Native American population to decrease due to killings, starvation, epidemic illness, from an estimated 300,000 to 20,000. Those not killed were often sold as slaves, and this whole collective chapter became known as the California genocide. Whereas our country at its founding stated an ideal of equality and opportunity for all people, it promised that despite the extraordinary progress we have made through the years, we have never fully lived up to. And whereas, we investigate and talk about our inhumanity so that we can make more clear what humanity looks like and what continuous actions it requires to make the country we love more closely approximate the ideals upon which it was founded. And whereas, the idea was first proposed by Indigenous peoples at the United Nations in 1977, and a little over 100 years later, in 1989, South Dakota became the first state to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. A little over 20 years after that, in 2021, President Biden became the first U.S. president to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, therefore, I step in as more mayor of the Village of Gulf Manor. By virtue of the authority vested in me by our village charter constitution laws, the state of Ohio, the United States, hereby affirm a claim. October 9th, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and ask that the residents and businesses of Gulf Manor to not only celebrate the invaluable contributions of Indigenous peoples, but to celebrate the amazing resilience of Indigenous peoples and commit to doing what we collectively can to make sure the federal government honors its treaty obligations to Native nations. Is there a motion to affirm?
Hold up a minute or two.
All those in favor?
Hi.
No objection, I'll take that as unanimous. Thank you.
Do you have a second? I think you should also include mentioning that the Hopewell Earthworks were just named the UNESCO World Heritage Site in Ohio. There's like eight of them around Ohio. They're like 2,000 to 1,600 years old, and they have finally reached UNESCO. So, it's a very, very important announcement.
There are... Thank you. Yes, it is, and there's been, as I alluded to, a lot of progress that's been made over the past several years, and just recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day alone has something that the two largest existing tribes here in the United States have expressed great gratitude for, recognizing their sites, which is kind of the purpose of my going through the whole Fort Washington and everything, identifying the history of many sites and names that we all may find familiar. So, I met with Lou, Councilman Marx, was that last week or the week before?
On our... About our safety and...
Yeah.
That was like two weeks ago.
It was two weeks ago. All right.
Five blocks.
One of us knows.
Yeah.
So, there is some notes that Mr. Marx is making available to anyone that's interested that has to do with responses that we can take to some of the concerns that we have around security and code enforcement in the community. So, I would invite you all to pursue that if that's in interest of yours. I have some detailed notes on that that are included in what he's passing out, and I would appreciate feedback on that. Also met with residents of Ridge Acres at their homeowners association meeting, which you were all invited to. And just as a listening session, I wasn't there to say anything. I appreciate it. The concerns of the residents that were raised, I asked our legal advisor to do a little bit of research to see if there's anything that we might be able to do to help hold responsible the folks that are codified as responsible for property maintenance in there. He's looking into that. I spoke with him a little bit about that today, so looking forward to hear more about what we may be able to do concerning that. I think we are at the important part of looking at the strategic plan now. So, I want to thank Councilman Fisher for taking everyone's input. We've been working on this for quite a while to get input from the community and from all the council members, to make sure that it's in the document and one that reflects our hopes for the future of the village. I've done my best to wordsmith this in a way that could be accepted by full council tonight. We do have legislation where if we are in agreement, that we can go ahead and pass a resolution tonight, which I can read. I'll go ahead and read the resolution firstly in a sense of what it says and what it doesn't say, which is...
We're going to have to read it again later. It's got to be read because it wasn't posted.
Right.
And you can certainly read it now, but...
It's very short, but just to give you a sense of what it is that we'd be asking for here before we even get into the details of it. Whereas, the village administration and council of Gulf Manor believe that the development of specific mission priorities and action items are vital to planning the future of the community. And whereas, the village administration and council of Gulf Manor have developed mission priorities and action items, which include community input and collaboration with a professional consultant. And whereas, the establishment of these values and goals provides the framework for the development of the Village of Gulf Manor and gives village staff both a direction and sense of purpose to the actions of the community and its organizations. Nowfore, therefore, we, be it resolved at the village administration, mayor, and council, that the attached strategic plan for the Village of Gulf Manor is hereby adopted, be it further resolved that the mission priorities and action items set forth in the strategic plan shall be provided to other government entities and agencies as appropriate for the purpose of coordination of activities and sharing of our vision. So, as I had shared with you previously, the plan is that I will read through the complete version of the strategic plan. I have copies up here that I can pass around to folks that are here. I know that those that you... I don't know if I have enough here right now.
There's a whole stack with the resolution attached.
Yes. Okay, perfect.
There's some of those, two hundred years of those.
About here, so you can read along. All right. So, the idea about reading it first is so that, you know, in wordsmithing it, some things were moved around, and if we read it through first, that way if you have any concerns about something, you want it included, and it's not there, you'll be able to hear that it was incorporated later. I promised everyone that if there are issues, we could, you know, ask for motions for line items to be removed from it. I'm hoping that we don't have to do that, but here we go.
So, I have a question. I know that all of us sent our information to Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
I believe you produced a document. I don't think that was sent out to everyone.
The...
Whatever summary he produced, so...
Correct.
What he produced, which is our input, we don't have a copy of that. All we have is this revised...
Right. That was put in there. So, everything that you've... Everything that was given to Mr. Fisher should be in there. If it's not, let me know.
I don't know because I don't know what... We have not seen his document.
Right. So, I've asked Mr. Fisher to look at it, and my understanding is that it all is in there. All right. That's...
Well, I would like to hear him say that. Are we accurate or not?
I haven't matched it up.
Even match it up? Okay.
It is... I went through great efforts to make sure that everything that was on Mr. Fisher's list was put into the strategic plan. I want it to reflect every single council member's input that provided input, and that was my goal in this. I didn't have any goal to leave things out of it. So, here we go. Mission, priorities, and action items. Mission statement: The Village of Gulf Manor is dedicated to provide a welcoming and safe community for its diverse residents, patrons, and businesses. Village will implement policies focusing on fiscal responsibility, helpful service to its residents, positive interactions with patrons, and a proactive approach to economic growth and prosperity. Priorities are people and neighborhoods, parks and services, image and prosperity. Action items: People and neighborhoods. People: As a village, we recognize our first priority is to the residents of Gulf Manor. Village council and administration will engage in activities to help individuals and promote a feeling of unity throughout the village. We will: Through community engagement, explore and implement strategies that increase community input into municipal decision-making. Through community engagement, explore and implement strategies, I bless you, that increase community awareness of existing resources and services beneficial to residents. Expand the use of the We Thrive Health and Wellness Partnership with the Hamilton County Board of Health to better understand the health needs of the community and to increase and expand programming and response. Use the Recreation Commission to expand programming and infrastructure that addresses the recreational preferences of the community. Pursue placement of bus stop shelters throughout the village to increase quality of living for Gulf Manor residents that use public transit. Pursue and implement methods to better connect cost-burdened households to existing federal, state, and county assistance programs, like home and community hall visits from resource navigators. Strive to provide services for the unique dietary needs of the community, kosher, vegetarian, vegan, non-dairy, gluten-free, at all village events where food is served. Neighborhoods: As a predominantly residential community, we recognize the importance of neighborhood development that protects property values and promotes community connectedness of all residents, young and old. We will: Create additional public infrastructure to the direct benefit of our residential neighbors, such as: Pursue partnership with Hamilton County toward a placement of a Hamilton County public library within the village, walkable for all residents, but specifically for our residents who have children. Monitor properties for sale within the residential center of the village for purchase, demolition, rezoning, and redevelopment as a fenced dog park with trees and sheltered picnic tables. Increase the number of speedhums throughout the village. Pursue adjustments of road plans to increase concrete, to increase concrete rather than asphalt residential streets, add solar power USB charging stations in public gathering spaces. Pursue partnerships that promote community service that directly benefits residents. Pursue partnerships that help homeowners connect to low-interest home improvement loans and other assistance programs, such as People Working Collaborative RITI and Habitat for Humanity. Expand community policing activities and events, which prioritize engagement with residents, young and old, such as walking the neighborhoods and playing competitive games with neighborhood kids in parks. Pursue beautification projects along our streets and within our public spaces. Pursue partnerships to bring commercial services, such as a farmer's market and grocery stores to the village that can serve the unique needs of the community, basic as well as non-dairy, kosher, vegetarian, vegan, gluten-free options. Actively seek grants and donations to secure or supplement funding for these projects beyond appropriations designated by council. Parks and services: Parks: We recognize the importance of recreational green spaces for the health of communities and are committed to both improving and increasing these spaces throughout Gulf Manor with input from residents. We will: Have a publicly accessible plan for park development priorities. Incorporate community feedback into park development priorities. Examples include circular walking path parkours, child splash pad, more trees and shelters, picnic benches, basketball and soccer nets, larger bathrooms, and more water pumps. We will use the Recreation Commission to plan, organize, and supervise village recreational programs for both children and adults in village parks. Programs shall be diverse to serve all Gulf Manor residents. We Thrive, the Health and Wellness Partnership with Hamilton County Health, will be used to supplement programming and funds. Community engagement will be used to collect community input into programming priorities and to coordinate strategies for community awareness of both existing and planned programs. Actively seek grants and donations to secure or supplement funding for these projects beyond appropriations designated by council. Services: We recognize the importance of developing strategies for continuous improvement of the services provided to Gulf Manor residents, that these be relevant and timely quality services, and that more such services should be developed and offered where possible. We will: Use community engagement to collect community input into service priorities and to coordinate strategies for community awareness of both existing and planned services. Expand training of the maintenance department for increased expertise in new service areas beneficial to residents and businesses of Gulf Manor. Provide an example to surrounding businesses of sustainable competitive salaries and benefits for the well-being of our employees. Actively seek grants and donations to secure or supplement funding for these projects beyond appropriations designated by council. Images and prosperity. Image and prosperity. Image: We recognize the vital importance of cultivating a positive image of Gulf Manor, both for residential pride and for healthier investment from neighboring and residential partnerships. We will: Establish and maintain partnerships with Gulf Manor residential real estate companies to keep a pulse on our outside image and opportunities for improvement. Establish and maintain partnerships with surrounding neighborhoods, for example, through existing organizations like Community Happens Here, to share and promote community events and success stories. Establish and maintain partnerships with local media outlets to improve media through promotion of community events and success stories. Partner with Metro to refurbish, meaning fresh coat of paint and signage, the train trestle bridge at the village's western gateway, a Village of Evendale example. Pursue ordinances that protect roadways and sidewalks while simultaneously promoting increased canopy trees along our major roadways, City of Wyoming example. Pursue commissioning life-size statues at main intersections throughout the village representing families, partnerships, and friendship, City of Montgomery example. Continue efforts in code enforcement and increase the number of proactive strategies to combat vandalism and theft, examples, community watch and security cameras. Prosperity: We recognize and are committed to the four components of prosperity in Gulf Manor: financial growth, social connectedness, professional achievement, and legacy of stewardship. We will: Pursue strategies that increase municipal revenue and property values to support new and existing services without increasing taxes. Pursue control of blighted areas in the business district for redevelopment, attractive to new business development opportunities. Pursue control of blighted areas in the residential district for redevelopment attractive to new housing development opportunities. Prioritize business development partnerships that provide higher-paying job opportunities to Gulf Manor residents. Seek additional innovative strategies to increase the number of successful businesses and higher-paying employers in Gulf Manor. Pursue strategies that increase property value through municipal improvements and code enforcement. Pursue gaslight-style light fixtures throughout select areas of the business and residential district. Pursue consolidation and/or undergrounding the utility and data lines in select areas of business and residential districts. Annex agreeable outside residential and business properties to increase revenue if, when, cost-benefit of doing so is beneficial to the village. Pursue projects to revive the natural ecosystem of the village and sustainability of the broader biospheres of legacy for future generations. Pursue projects that decrease each year the carbon footprint of municipal operations, like the use of solar or electric vehicles. Pursue partnerships that help Gulf Manor residents and businesses reduce carbon footprint of their operations, such as public access to electric vehicle charging stations within the business district and solar conversion projects. Pursue business partnerships and ordinances that transition use of styrofoam and single-use plastics to paper containers and bags. Pursue projects that increase native flora throughout the village, such as transitioning municipal planning of annual non-native flora with perennial native flora. Pursue projects that provide annual resident education about how to increase native pollinators and home landscaping, and about the dangers of carcinogenic weed killers. Actively seek grants and donations to secure or supplement funding for these projects beyond appropriations designated by council. If anyone submitted an idea and it is not in there, let me know to lose point.
That will take some time, you know, to figure that out.
Well, that would be, you know, if you look at what you submitted and see if that's in there. All right. And each person can do that.
So, when do we want to do that?
I was thinking that was tonight. I would think that you... I was expecting that each council member would know what they had put in, and given that they had this last Friday, that they had the opportunity, each person had the opportunity to look and see if their thing was in there or not.
Okay. Make a suggestion, or at least a thought is... First of all, I'm very impressed. It is, to me, it's complete and it's passable. But I also think that one of the things we want to, may add later, would be that we review this intentionally on a regular basis, and also I'd like the word "it's a great place to live." Now, I'm not saying that tonight, but I think the best time to do that, if recorded with Mr. Marx, would be to plan to do that at the first meeting after the first year, or something after the election, and we could... That way, it gives us time to do what you're mentioning, and... Because I don't want to get into that tonight. Those are just my things, but those aren't going to stop. This is... And it is fluid. It's supposed to be something that will take things out, put things in over time, so it's not like this is in a stone, you know, in terms of that. So, that's what I suggested, we have to say that, but we will review this, let any other things...
Mr. Van Harn had... Yeah. Mr. Van Harn had raised this with me earlier today about the idea of, you know, this being a living document. this being a living document that we continue to work on. And what I wanted to mention was that I brought this to the administration, we looked at it, we also met with the consultant, and he looked at it and talked about with the administration what next steps are going to be as far as deciding as a council and administration, which of these do we buy into first, right? And that's certainly something that I don't think we should be getting into tonight, right?
Right.
That's certainly something for a new council to be looking into, and we'll certainly have the help of the consultant to be walking us through that process with charts and things. But to your point, that was something that people had put into this, and there is a part about the community engagement piece there, to be providing feedback about what should the priorities be. So, that is built into there, it is built into the first part of this.